As we continue our discussion, the framework for consideration of options that Dr. King provided, I think is a good place for us to kind of move toward conclusion in terms of what we are asking, again, of Mr. Richter to provide back for us. So, one question was about the pre-K, the addition of the pre-K piece to it. Are we clear on that being a part of the report?
Yes.
The pre-K options?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes.
For clarification, we were talking with the break that about the current pre-K waitlist. That the current pre-K, and Dr. King will correct me, but the current pre-K waitlist is those students who are currently in the income restricted model that are trying to access seats that we don't currently have. So I think it was 215 to 300 students. And so when the question came up at our last joint meeting with council and the $4 million figure came up, that was dealing with those 215 low-income families trying to access pre-K. So when we talk about the universal pre-K, that's an entirely different number, both in terms of seats and in terms of cost. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Right. Okay. Is everybody clear on the options related to the elementary schools period, especially those that are currently on the list for construction? I just want to make sure we're clear at the elementary school level in terms of what was being proposed for options for...
We're not changing any of the current proposals.
That's correct.
Can I get just real quick confirmation on the capacity, the intended capacity of those buildings?
So it'll be 700 for Richard Bowling, 700 for Larchmont, and 700 for Ocean View.
Okay. That is, right now, that is wrong on our sheet, so we make sure we'll change that.
Okay. And that is what's currently in the proposals record? Yes, okay.
So they've been asked to submit or their proposals with those numbers. They cannot change those numbers, is that correct? The people, the responders to the proposals cannot change those numbers.
Actually, those numbers were submitted by those proposals. You gotta remember that some of those proposals were ones who developed those numbers.
I understand where the numbers are coming from.
Right.
That they won't change again.
They met with us four, five years ago and they did through this. So that's what I'm going to tell them.
Okay. Any other questions about the elementary schools? All right, middle schools. Do we all understand what Sam was proposing in terms of selected options and parameters? Any disagreement with any part of the middle school piece that he shared?
It's not about disagreement. I don't want to omit any possible use of that middle school. So we're not, the fact that we're not asking for him to bring back any other scenarios.
Right.
We have a possible use of facilities there. It could be that we're told the Tidewater Park needs to go to Santa Claus. We may need to consider Lafayette Winona for other purposes, or another, one of the middle schools.
Right. So...
I don't want to say that...
So you're recommending an addition for...
No, not, I don't want them to do anything further.
Okay.
I'm just saying, when they come back with information, we've got to be open to a whole set of scenarios.
Right.
And not that anything's going to happen to Tidewater Park Elementary and School. Not that it's going to be Lafayette Winona. It can be any one of the middle schools. But I don't want to shut ourselves off. But I do support what was superintendent suggesting.
Okay. And what came of the ninth grade academy component of conversation? Was that under consideration or not?
I mean, I think that would be a good consideration. I don't know what others think.
I don't want to shut it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was only asking in this sense of because you had the overutilization at the high school level and the underutilization at some middle schools.
Right.
Could you have some ninth grade academies that might provide some of that relief?
And I would imagine, and I would certainly defer to the experts, that just as we have that sixth grade depth in terms of performance, ninth grade is the same type of...
Reduced students.
Yeah. And so that kind of academy could...
Alexandria City for about 10 years had a ninth grade school to handle the very issue of transition.
Okay.
My hometown.
So we would include that if it's a possible option? Okay. All right. In terms of the high school scenario that Sam presented, any questions, additions, disagreement?
My sense of it is we didn't give clear enough guidance to Mr. Richter and team to come back to us yet. But I certainly do support what Dr. King said.
Now, of course, a part of his thoughts, and not that I need to repeat it, but I want to make sure we understand what we're asking for, and that was to look at rezoning across the district in consideration of high poverty schools and what some of those scenarios for all three grade levels could look like. Okay?
Includes the CTE or is that a separate... Separate items? At the... Then I have one question on that. I know we've talked about the CTE only at Lake Taylor. Is there any other scenario that we should consider? Based upon the numbers that they had on, what was the slide that you had on, what did you call it?
The blue slide.
Folks were not likely to leave. What was that, which slide was that?
Oh, the levitend.
What's it called?
It's called a levitend analysis.
Yeah. Oh, we don't have that.
Oh, we don't have that, right? We'll make sure we get you that copy.
Well, my thinking along that line, Mr. Jordan, was that suggesting that the young Richter would run options when you look at high school that would include the notion that Lake Taylor be the CTE school like we discussed and look at what implications are for zone changes and all of the above, that's one thing. But the other would be run another scenario that they might feel based on the statistics that could be something else to ponder that would really address the hyper, the extreme poverty that we face now. So you'd have both scenarios to consider, knowing that we've done a feasibility study already and we may not be able to modify to the other piece, but at least we would know what the data was telling us.
Just remind me, because I thought when they did the feasibility study, the final, that we had Lake Taylor and Booker T. And that both of those have the lowest percent transference, I guess to be specific. I'm just asking, what was the, Booker T, was it just off the list? Because I was going back to the conversation of the point that they made about getting, being centrally located. And with Booker T being centrally located, and with both Booker T and Lake Taylor having the smaller percent transfer in, does it make any sense to look at Booker T as well, or is that something that's already been...
What you're asking was Booker T considered?
Right.
In the study?
Was it considered and should we reconsider it?
It was considered in the study. All five locations were considered in the study. I would have to defer to...
Real estate.
Yeah, I thought it was land. I thought it was the land issue.
You know, I'll just bring this up again. Should we consider at the CTE location at Lake Taylor, the potential for co-locating the governor's school if we were to pursue that one day?
Well, I don't see anything wrong with that being a part of what they do in the review, just to determine what the impression would be for that.
Good, thank you.
And you have all the possibilities.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the high school options? Okay. Any additional thoughts for Mr. Richter, Mr. Wong?
I have a, can I ask a question on the high school? As far as, because when we came back with options, all on the table, our option was for Booker T Washington as a CT because of location, transfer rates, ability to serve the highest amount and percentage of students. And if land is the only thing that set it apart, is that, was it nose to nose? And then all of a sudden it was because of that flexibility? Were there other factors?
We pulled the data and we brought it for you. There were multiple variables that we used, but we had an architectural team that came. And we visited each site, and that's why we selected Lake Taylor.
Didn't build the school while using the current school, is that correct?
Maybe about a little more, I mean Rex, I'm changing name.
See, I can't say anything different than Dr. Sam just said.
Sure you can.
Wise man.
I mean, but land was a major concern and being able to build a school while the building was in operation.
Let me ask this question.
Not that that can't be done at Booker T, because we didn't play football. And so we did that before. So, you know, a lot of things can be done just because of how you want to do them. But I don't think that, I don't think that was the only consideration when it came to Lake Taylor. And I don't have, you know, that information before, but we can provide. I mean, we can provide that study with every element in it.
No, I mean, we've seen the study, and if it came down to geography and land...
Ease of transportation was another factor.
Sure.
Right. Exactly. I mean, the location of Texas 64. Right.
And programmatically, you're down the road of taking one of your comprehensive high schools offline. There's not a consideration for making it a programmatic pullout school also. So, attract, being able to offer a division-wide choice at this building, but attending your home high school also.
It has always been discussed as a standalone. I think that's, that came from the committee.
And once again, my only reservation is, is that you're tying your hands with capacity. Okay, if I were to go to the extreme, build a center CTE building and let all schools use it. Okay, that's my extreme. My balance is because you have a utilization issue, you're 90% of your high schools. And I'm not suggesting adding any more seats.
Well, again, you talked about the planning that would go into it in terms of surveys and what have you. The two models we visited and looked at, Polytech in Delaware, and I can't think of the name of the one in Weston. But these were just two, a number of very successful models that draw from across the city. And I remember quite specifically during the visit in Polytech in Delaware, the number of kids throughout the district that were banging down the doors to get into that school. Anything is possible, but I'd be the most surprised guy in the city. If we had a problem attracting kids to that school based on the models that we've visited and observed...
I guess my question there is, the demographics and the capacity of the other buildings in that district, did they sustain a model of capacity for that? So did I draw boundaries in those districts to, because I'm going to have to deliver a plan.
Right.
And again, this is the difficult part, and the first step of communication is you're going to walk into your communities and you're going to say, "We're going to build you a boundary that's going to overutilize your building on paper."
I got you.
Let me restate that. We're going to jam pack those schools without much room to grow.
And again, you have the option to come out, and that's the thing. And you've got a great option for that, so I don't want to undersell that. But I, these models are successful, very successful. And so I just want to make sure that we're good with that. I'm okay with however you want to see that direction happen, unless you want to see another option out there.
Yeah, and at that point, it's not a comprehensive career technical education high school. It's just a career technical education school.
Which we've got already.
Right. It's a center of both that.
I think what I'm hearing, Mr. Richter, trying to warn us of, is we're getting ready to overcapacity every other school if we take one school off.
Again, and you have a strategy, and I guess, I guess the rotation out is that you have a fifth high school. If it doesn't work, yeah.
What's that?
The rotation out is, and which is a good enough answer for me, that you have a comprehensive high school.
Sure. Right. Right. Yeah. I mean, I don't think we should ever be against receiving more information. I mean, that doesn't mean we have to...
Sure. No, trust me, we'll give you information.
Right. I mean, I'm sharing my thoughts on the, you know, on the CTE school. I mean, one voice, one vote, obviously.
Sure. I mean...
You know, it's a standing thing, so I guess that's silence to support.
Whatever is likely to, you know, latest foundation for the cornerstone of a probably diverse community, you know.
And, and, well, I'm not going to say that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
For all, regardless of location, regardless of building size.
The thing that I found, again, most exciting and attractive was that it's a school that will serve any of our students. Whether you, if you want to divide it into tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three kids. This is not a school for one particular segment of students, you know. For kids that's not going to college, the kids that are College Mount. This is a school that will provide, that will prepare kids for both college and careers. And of course, the exciting thing is that they will graduate with a certification.
Sure.
Industry-level certification, that they wanted to go straight to the world of work. In the words of our superintendent, they could. But also prepared for college and high rigor across the board. And so I think it would be good for newer board members to take a visit. I mean, I know we've made a number of visits there, but a major opportunity for this city. That school would be a game changer, for sure.
Sure.
Having our businesses and community partners and enterprises supportive of the CTE.
I'm sorry?
Having our major businesses in the community supporting the CTE concept. Right. Say it again?
Yes.
Oh, exactly. Right.
I want to be clear on one thing. What you're hearing us say is that if someone lives in the zone of the new CTE high school, and they go to that high school, they're going to play football, baseball, and basketball for that high school. Because we're calling it a comprehensive school. They're not going to be going back to their other school to play sports. I just want...
Yeah. That's what you just said.
Yes. That's all I'm saying. All I'm stating is, because the word comprehensive defines a means, people who go to that school play sports for that school.
Right.
Comprehensive, that's what it means.
Right. That's right.
I'm just wanting us to walk into this knowing that's what we're saying.
Yes.
Cool.
Okay. Any more comments? Any more questions for us?
Make sure I covered all my bases.
For me, the big question is when we can get this information. When it fits in? Because Dr. King has some very important information on the budget and everything else.
Listen, I know your addictions when it's something that you would have needed.
Yes, sir.
So I guess my question...
You feel my pain.
Perseveration.
Thank you, sir.
Because there's steps that have to occur that allow this to happen. Obviously, for us to develop options based on the list that we've been given tonight. Coming back to meet with staff, you've got the community component to this yet, that, you know, vetting this in a community setting. And again, it's not, and a lot of it is making sure that we've exposed options, vetted those options. We've always contended it's not a vote in the community, it's a temperature taker. It's trying to figure out what tolerances are that your community can tolerate within their educational delivery. And so if we measure a K8 at a middle school out there to kind of see what the feeling is behind that, that's, you kind of gauge that, that way you can see the level of support that you're going to get too. That, those don't happen Monday, Tuesday, then Wednesday, then Thursday, then Friday, unfortunately. They'll take some prep and notification to the public, getting our steering committee re-engaged. Not to say this can't be done expediently, but I'm probably better working with a drop-dead date and working backwards at this point from you. If, if that's a possibility to ask for. I don't know that.
Mr. Thorne?
We're in our budget season, and we have a lot of this, as Bora mentioned earlier, has implications for the decisions that we have to make here in the next few weeks. And we, our budget is due to the city on April the 1st. I mean, because I don't know, I have no idea of the kind of time that it takes to pull together the kind of report that you have to present to us. And so I don't know if 30 days is just unreasonable, unrealistic. But our superintendent's proposed budget is coming to us February 19th. That's exact, almost 30 days, that's 30 days from Saturday. Once we get that, we have to go back to work on that to finalize it in six weeks. So is 30 days unrealistic?
Well, it depends on the complexity of, if it's programmatic changes, if it's choice, where it's going to have transportation implications. If it's programmatic in relation to pre-K, then it's going to have staffing implications. So those would be the two major costs or budgetary implications we would have to factor in. Staffing resulting from pre-K most likely, and transportation resulting from whatever choice model or trying to relieve some of the high poverty schools.
The biggest part is not the options. It's not the data.
Okay.
That, we, you know, Lee and I could sit down in a couple of days in our conference room, get through it, do it all. It's the community piece. That's the big piece to this, is that, you know, when you're looking at trying to just prepare for a community dialogue, which means you have to meet with that steering committee to vet those with that steering committee to prep for that. I mean, that's, I think that's the key element here.
Sure.
And you got to make it, like we said from again, you can't make it feel like we're rushing it in front of them. But you can't feel like you're drawing it out too. So it's a balance for me, is, so the budget implications are, let's think worst-case scenario, that if I were to develop options out there and there's simply no low-hanging fruit that we're going to be able to accomplish next year.
Our budget is, we're looking at a five-year plan.
So you use a five-year, but you're mandated to all five years?
No, 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 no. The budget we will submit to the council, of course, would be...
Sure.
A one-year budget.
Okay, okay, that's what I...
But for our planning purposes, even as we plan this budget, we will be looking five years out so that we can build upon...
Sure. Yep.
With the planning this year.
February 19th, huh? That's a big...
I mean, you asked...
No.
To give you a...
Exactly.
What'd you say, Rodney?
I was saying that's all we were trying to do. November timeframe, so we have it. Well, I think they've already given us the biggest piece of the puzzle for this year's budget is that we were looking for school combination or consolidation or whatever. And the recommendation we're getting from them is, there is none at this point in time. So from a budget standpoint, I think that's, they've asked, that question's asked and answered.
Yeah, the pre-K though isn't.
But that's got to be a different funding source anyway.
Right. But we still need to know what it would take so that Michael can build, construct a budget associated with it.
If the idea is that pre-K will go into effect for the next school year, and that's going to have budget implications. If that's another long-term or intermediate, long-term plan, then it may not have FY15 implications. But we won't know that until we see what the options for bringing that in line would be. And then we factor in if they're going to be incremental costs each year to build a program, or are we going to try to do it all in one year?
I was going to say, is it realistic to say that we're going to have universal pre-K in 2015?
That's the question. And we're going to phase it in, if we are, what will be the model for phasing it in as we build the budget for 15 and beyond. It's no different than doing a capital improvement plan.
There are three big bunches of information that's ready to give to us now that we've had this meeting. We have, Mr. Rex has got a report, Ms. Akora will have a report, and Personnel has got some numbers for us. We've got to consider all those as we look at what we're going to do in the operating budget. So all that stuff can come to us pretty soon, but we still have to consider all those things in a moving part. And we've got to consider what can we move out of our annual operating budget and move into a comprehensive CIP to give us room for the things that we need to have in the operating budget. Most of that is personnel. Can ever play for any personnel outside of the annual operating budget.
And I'll just give us a little reality. We've got to figure all of this with the 15 to 20 million dollar beginning budget gap slash deficit from last year as we go into FY15.
I was chilling.
Universal pre-K is all families eligible to receive, to attend, pre-K. But it doesn't necessarily mean pre-K at every school, correct? And then what are you talking about?
Right. Doesn't have to be every school.
Could be in five locations in the city in general, one major location.
So in terms of a pre-K scenario for the upcoming year, so there's one, trying to figure out what the big picture is across the board. But if, looking at your current utilization, I don't know, are you able to prioritize any schools right now that could accept universal pre-K, have the capacity for it? And maybe that might allow us to get a low-hanging fruit snapshot, if you will, as well as a bigger picture snapshot.
That's what this page was when it, then you conclude that Ocean View and Willoughby had some capacity there?
Sure. I don't know if that makes any sense or not, but...
I mean, you're going to have to balance that against other initiatives.
Yeah, I know, the other factors.
Yeah, those, if I want, because those, that may hinder my socioeconomic balance.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
I mean, I... You don't find me speechless very often, that's for sure. Ask anybody I've ever met. He'll vouch for that.
What do you do when you're speechless?
Yeah. It's, um...
Leave a room.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, the pressing need is to get together with the staff immediately, and then, and Lee and I were actually talking about that before the meeting during the break a little bit too, is that, I mean, the options have to be developed now. And so, you know, we look at next Monday to say, okay, we need staff next Monday. No way around it. And that means we're talking to steering committee members within the week, which means in another week, we're talking to the community, which means the next week, we're talking recommendations, which means the next week, you're delivering budget. That's how quick that process is.
Say it, say it again?
So I'm next week with staff. So, I'm next week with staff, and it has to be Monday.
It's a holiday.
It just pushes.
It is a good search project.
It's, no doubt. It's no wonder I don't have anything on the calendar for Monday.
Yeah, right, right.
Saturday and Sunday are just two more workdays till Monday, right?
Exactly.
It's... Well, I mean, that really lays out almost a week, I mean, it's a week calendar. I mean, it's a steering committee one week, community dialogue the next week, steering committee, done.
So, obviously, this is a big chunk of information that we need, but there is, I'm thinking, still a good deal of work we can do concurrent with this. So, I mean, I'm wondering, at the March 1st, will be 30 days, and normally, that's kind of crunch time for us, that work session, first week of March, that we typically dedicate to the budget, because that's normally right in the heart of the work, after having received the superintendent's proposed budget. I'm wondering if, would March 1st help you? Obviously, it would.
Yeah, as I was looking, even, even the 20, I mean, the 28th of that March 1st provides some sense of relief, that's, and that. Again, it's...
What's our thinking in terms of the work that we still have to do in terms of, you know, I mean, there's a gap we gotta close, and some sub decisions...
We gotta have public meetings on the budget, too.
There's technology, there's maintenance, there's capital, facilities, there's program evaluation.
And I'm meeting on this, right?
So, does March 1st, would this report work for us?
Yeah, and I think, just to be informed along the way, we'll all be working concurrently with the current information, current data.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll continue, continued updates on that.
Right. So, Tracy, is that doable, you think?
We'll, we'll make it doable.
Okay. Okay. We definitely thank you, know we're pushing you here, and we appreciate all that you are doing.
And we do look forward to re-engaging the community. We've talked about having to do that, it's been a while since they've been at the table to talk about it, so...
Sure. Yeah, we miss our steering committee members. We're gaining a good relationship with them, so...
They were engaged.
Yeah, we're, I'm looking forward to being with them again, absolutely.
So, when did the PPA community forum start?
After, after the end of January, for sure. We've got three sessions where we hear the proposals.
Maybe...
I don't know that that's been established yet. It has not been established yet.
I mean, is it possible there may be some alignment there?
Perhaps. There's been a lot of conversation around, hearing from the demographic studies relates to what we're trying to do with the process.
Dr. Houston, we're meeting on 5th of March, right?
Right. The work session is the, I believe, is the 5th.
5th.
That's correct. The work session is the 5th of March.
Thank you, sir.
Right. Okay, yes.
When Tracy considers the universal pre-K, and determine whether or not he has capacity, then does a number come with it?
A number? What do you mean by that?
Well, I mean, you gonna tell us whether or not we have capacity, right?
That'll be the first.
All right, so, let's just say we have capacity, then we gotta convert it.
Over.
I understand.
Or pre-K.
Right. But that's not the only number you're gonna need. And so, that's why I'm asking.
We've got the other numbers. We've got the numbers.
Okay, now, what numbers do you have?
In terms of what it would cost us to equip a classroom, in terms of equipment, staffing, and having it ready to go, I don't have the numbers in regard to taking a regular classroom and converting it to a pre-K classroom. I don't have that piece.
And you don't know whether or not we need talks?
That's the biggest thing.
Correct. That's part of what I needed, I mean, the...
All right, so, when his numbers meet yours, then I can give you my number.
Correct. It's a collaborative effort.
All right.
See, they, did they coordinate then?
Yes, we did.
Sounds like they coordinated.
But, Dr. Houston, may I ask one clarifying point?
Yes, ma'am.
Our first goal is to eliminate the waiting list, and then second, move into universal pre-K, correct?
Yes.
Well, we actually haven't eliminated that. We've all been talking about pre-K universal.
Right. Not all of us.
Well, many of us have. I mean, we know, by saying universal, we were taking into consideration that was gonna be done in all one fell swoop, if we were to do it in one big bang.
Well, then, the 4.2 million that we shared with the city council was to only eliminate the waiting list.
Right, which is what Rodney was mentioning.
We do not have a number in regard to universal. It would probably be guessing 10 times as much, at least.
So, as the school board has to consider everything at once, we have to look out over a five-year period, that's why we need to consider all these at once.
Okay. You good?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, thoughts?
Good job for the night.
Yes.
Okay, I do have, I'd like to, we've received the waiver document, so we have the right to ask questions about that. What's the plan with that? I'm not sure. I saw a timeline.
For, starting in August.
Yes. So, we have that information, and then if we have any questions about it, we send that back to you. But the ideas for there to be action on that based upon the timeline, I'm sorry?
We'd like to get, to take action at the next regular...
At the next regular, so the 20-second.
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 Okay, which means that we would have to add that to that discussion prior to the formal session, the timeframe that we have there. Now, again, remember that the appeals are still on, and so, we have that section from three until, no, from four, after the executive session, until 6:30. So, we would have to insert this discussion in there for any questions on it, in order for us to take action on it at the business meeting.
Yeah, just replay that, we can submit questions to you early.
Well, that's all I was asking.
So that we can get responses like we've done with Kptent or Other.
I still have 1:30. I could start at nine in the morning. I could be there, Reverend. I could be there.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't have...
Well, March 5th, first Wednesday in the month, of course, the work session.
Just one thing, in relation to this, if Mr. Gay and Ms. Sikora and Personnel are ready just to release that information, it could be fellow board members would like to get it all at once rather than waiting. I would hate to put it off anymore, but the reason why I had requested that they wait until this report be given is now satisfied. You know, if board members would want all that information, and it fits your approval, and it's all ready to release, then they could just get it without any presentation, in my opinion. Would you mind receiving it without a presentation?
It's the will of the board chair and superintendent. How do you wanna, how do you wanna just...
Y'all can figure that out, I just, I just was saying, I don't want to wait for another meeting and put off more information being available for us to ponder.
Yeah, we talked about this in our last meeting, about the best way to receive that information.
At the retreat, yeah.
Well, Gay gave a date from the Board Institute this weekend, just based on, remember the 22nd, I believe it was.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm just saying...
But if it's, if we have it before then, of course, I think what I hear you saying is, you'd be happy to receive it if it's ready before then.
Well, it's the 22nd, we get the report Friday anyway, which is four days from now.
Right.
Yeah. I just, I just don't want there to be any holdup, so board members can have enough information to ponder. These are complex decisions that need to be made in a coordinated fashion.
So, yeah, so, can we expect those presentations on, for the business on Friday?
Of course.
See, I do it every time. Don't do that.
We had originally been told the 22nd, so that's the timeline that we had plotted out.
Why would we want to get any information on the day of the board meeting? Who'd always want to get it in advance?
Well, now, keep, y'all, keep in mind the format, the format that we're using, so, that particular board meeting typically wouldn't be a discussion date under our new format. The work session would typically be the day we were discussing. So, if we hadn't added that additional time in before the business meeting on the 22nd, we wouldn't be having this discussion about a discussion on the 22nd. So, we gotta keep in mind what we agreed upon. Right. So, I mean, receiving it, so then, in my opinion, if we're receiving it on the 22nd, then it's not an issue, because typically, we wouldn't be discussing that on that date. Follow what I'm saying?
No, I do follow.
Okay.
I'm just trying to figure out, are we trying to discuss it on the 22nd?
No. We cannot keep adding stuff to that, you know...
So, we're not gonna discuss it on the 22nd?
That's why I was trying to get clarity around.
I mean, if we're not, then that, I'm good with it.
Yeah, that was an old point.
It's not, we're not expecting to have that on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought we were discussing, because that's part of the budget discussion.
Let me look at my notes from the retreat. I'm getting confused now.
Yeah, we were discussing on the 22nd. Facilities, capital, IT, it was all gonna be a discussion point together.
You're right.
That was the, that was what we left.
Well, Monday's a holiday, so if we can't get it by Friday, we wouldn't get it to Tuesday, we wouldn't expect it to send it to us on holiday. So... And I'm with Rodney on being realistic, because I mean, what happens, I don't want to put you under pressure to produce something earlier than you can produce it, and then, you know, right, exactly. Is Tuesday reasonable? I mean, I know that gives us a short window to review it in preparation, and I'll stay corrected on the last piece.
Should we allow for this to be discussed offline? Let's allow for this to be discussed offline.
Should we move it back to the 22nd? That's right. You're absolutely right. That was part of the reason for having additional time, the earlier meeting on the 22nd.
Just to talk budget and considering those various things.
So, the question now, instead of would it, can it be ready by the 22nd, is can it be ready by the 21st?
Or a third? I mean, or, yeah, 21st.
If it's ready the 22nd, I guess we'll just have to deal with it. We've got 29th as a placeholder to have additional discussions, and we seem to do a good job of discussing, so I think we should allow the administration to have it on the 22nd.
Right, right, right. That's not enough time for quality job.
Well, I'm in the service, we still have it for academic reviews. We have academic reviews Wednesday and Thursday of this week. We've got a group going to Richmond tomorrow for training, so we've got people who are spread out pretty thin in the next few days, so we can make every effort to have it to you on the 21st, and that will be our goal, but when we had originally plotted out the work progress, it was to have it to you by the closing, have it to you on the 22nd.
Okay. So, we will be, right, and we'll be in for the meeting on the 22nd, and then we'll be starting the discussion about 4:00 PM. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I think...
Yeah, we're going to the hotel to work.
Yeah, you better get on it. Well, thank you very much for the work that you've done so far, and tonight has definitely been extremely helpful for us in our continued decision-making.
And we certainly appreciate the time and energy you get at the forecaster.
Certainly. Thank you. And Stanton School there you spoke of, is the school my wife graduated from.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. And she's so smart.
I had to...
I don't know if she married you. Wow. Okay, if there's no other thoughts for the good of the order, we stand adjourned.